Yeah. Yeah, how about that? I'm just going to.
How are you?
You know.
You don't have it down.
Do you?
We've got seven people.
Honey.
Um.
Okay.
Did.
Is it coming?
Yes.
Right.
She didn't want me to.
She didn't want to send it forward.
That's it.
I asked the. Thank you.
Well, is that pretty much? Is it going to go flush with the handle?
Oh, yep.
Oh. I don't foresee Jim Richards.
These are all ears and then you.
I asked him if anyone wanted.
I don't see it.
We're having all four of them go.
Okay. We're not handing out.
Correct, we're not handing out. He's probably back.
Presentation, we're not, or just, right, just this guy, the project hearing summary. Yep.
Yeah. No, it's not true. It's my head. Or I have another ten. I want to make this much of a, and this idea. Thinking hard about the reason. Maybe this. Yeah. It's not the fire. Yeah. We. I'm sorry. Oh. I can't see it. It has normal. Was, was Kim coming?
Okay, it's six thirty, so we'll go ahead and start our public hearing. Uh, do roll call.
Lizzy Fuqun.
Ryanon Nikors.
Lori Nelfak.
Dana Brevner.
Is, um, Jim Richards on the line or on Zoom? He's, he may call and he's got COVID, but he may call or zoom in, I don't see him.
Yeah, I don't see him.
All right. There was, uh, we were missing just a line item to approve the agenda, I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Okay.
All those in favor, seeing if I'm saying hi.
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 So this evening, we have a public hearing for phase one A, which is our wastewater system and water main improvements. We have a presentation by Joe, Joe Payton, our city engineer. And he'll be with us, joining us just a few minutes. Mackenzie Grunig is also here from Stan Tech, help answer questions as well. Thank you for coming. Um, this is a public hearing, it's all part of our awareness for our residents with the transparency going forward now that we have bid costs. And we're getting ready to award the contracts. If not at the October meeting, but the November meeting. So, but we want to bring this information to you, and it was a form of a letter that you should have received in first of October. And so addressing those issues in a presentation that Joe is going to give, so. The presentation will be twenty, thirty minutes long, we allow you to answer questions at the end of the meeting. For those that are on Zoom, thank you for joining us. And if you want to submit your questions on a chat discussion or raise your hand, we'll view those after the presentation and we'll just kind of go through the questions and answer those with Joe and Mackenzie's help. Right now, everybody's muted on Zoom and we'll take the questions later. And with that, for those people that are here, if you do have a question later on after the presentation, if you just please come to the podium and just fill out a card with your name and address. And the same goes for the Zoom too, if you want to include your address in your Zoom question, chat question, that'd be great. With that, thank you again for coming, and Joe, if you're ready to proceed.
Absolutely, thank you. Well, as the mayor mentioned, we're here this evening for a public hearing. Uh, it is in fact the second public hearing that we've had for the phase one wastewater and sanitary sewer and water main improvement project. Uh, again, as Mayor, of course, indicated, my name is Joe Palin, I've, I'm the city engineer for Orinoco. Tonight, Mayor kind of went through the Zoom protocols, but again, please mute all mics and, and we'll hold questions and comments till after the presentation. Got maybe about twenty to thirty minutes, probably thirty minutes of presentation material, so hopefully we'll get through all of that and be able to address many of the questions that people have. Why are we here? Most importantly, we're here to provide an update of the project costs and the fees to be assessed based on actual bid construction cost. This meeting is really a follow up to the March twenty second, twenty twenty one public hearing that we had this last spring. Uh, we're here, of course, to listen to the public's concerns and address any questions that folks might have and obviously provide the updated information that we have to present tonight. We do have a public or project summary handout and figure, it's a six page handout. It was mailed, in fact, to all of the property owners with an invitation to this meeting. If you don't have a copy, there is one on the city's website at multiple locations. Uh, there's also paper copies in the, uh, McKenzie has at City Hall there for anybody that wants. In addition to that, there's lots of information on the website, including a frequently asked questions document. I would encourage folks, if they don't already have that, to take a look at the city's website, as that will answer lots of questions that folks may or may not have. Most of the information within the presentation that we will review tonight was originally presented at the March twenty second public hearing. I am not going to go over all of that information in great detail, but I do want to focus our discussion tonight on the updated project costs and fees to be assessed benefiting property owners. But that said, I do want to be thorough, I want to review all of the information on the slides, even if it's in a cursory manner, and then again, focus on the costs and, and the updated assessment information. Project history and milestone, everybody's familiar with the fact that Orinoco is the largest unsuited city in the state of Minnesota. And we've worked hard over the years to overcome this undesirable distinction, as you can see with the list of achievements that we've kind of had over the last, last few years. Since we met last at the March twenty second public hearing, a lot of work has been done. In fact, we completed design at, um, approximately June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. The MPCA and Minnesota Department of Health certified Orinoco's project construction plans and bidding documents, and subsequently we advertised for public bid and we opened bids on August twenty fifth, twenty sixth, and September second. Construction bids were formulated into three separate projects that comprise the entire wastewater system and water main improvement project. Talked about this also, why is the project needed? Again, Orinoco is planning to conduct this project to address some environmental concerns that the project would address. There's also public health and safety reasons as to why to do this project. And the project also supports responsible growth and economic development within the area. Project improvement scope. The project includes wastewater system improvements, and those wastewater improvements are really divided into three categories. Lateral sanitary sewer facilities, trunk sanitary sewer facilities, and wastewater treatment facilities. The water main improvements are really divided into two components. The lateral water improvements and the trunk water main improvements. And then, of course, the sewer and water improvements will disturb a lot of surface features, whether that be streets and driveways or boulevards and ditches and culverts and those types of things. Whatever we restore or we disturb within those corridors will be replaced in kind with the similar, similar types of materials. And in fact, I wanted to point out that there is quite a bit of bituminous street reconstruction. In fact, there's about three point nine miles of twenty-four foot wide equivalent roadway reconstruction that'll be constructed in conjunction with the project. Lateral sewer improvements, lateral sewer improvements really start at individual homes and collect wastewater from homes and businesses and convey that wastewater via grinder stations or small diameter force mains or small gravity pipe to the trunk sanitary sewer collection system. Here's an illustration of the proposed sanitary sewer improvements that are proposed to be constructed in conjunction with the phase one A improvements. As you can see on the map, there's lots of green lines with arrows, they're gravity sewers. The red lines, the red dash lines are force mains, so pipe that we force wastewater through via pumping. And all of that wastewater flows to low areas that, again, pump that wastewater up to central lift stations. Truck sanitary sewer improvements really consist of truck sanitary sewers. That being eight to twelve inch or eight to eighteen inch diameter gravity pipe. There are five pump stations, essentially what we call lift stations with force main piping, and these lift stations essentially pump the wastewater to a central location. That central location is a pump station to be located in River Park. That River Park lift station would collect all of the wastewater from Orinoco and essentially pump it to the wastewater treatment facility located south of Orinoco through a force main pipe that extends along Minnesota Avenue and Fortyth Avenue Northwest. Here's an illustration of that trunk sanitary sewer system. Again, we talked about the fact that there are five lift stations pumping to a central location, that's that lift station in River Park, and then via force main down Minnesota Avenue, if you can see my cursor to the wastewater treatment facility. That wastewater treatment facility is located immediately north of Orinoco Estates and Eighty Fifth Street and east of Trunk High fifty-two. So the wastewater treatment facility located here treats that wastewater and pumps the affluent treated wastewater via this, by a force main along this blue alignment to discharge into the middle fork of the Zumber River on the east side of city of Orinoco. Uh, the wastewater treatment facility, we kind of talked about that location. It's a mechanical wastewater treatment facility, and it is intended to serve Orinoco and Orinoco's wastewater needs for the next twenty years. It is a state of the art treatment facility, uh, which will produce high quality affluent. And again, discharge into the middle fork of the Zumber River downstream or east of city of Orinoco. Uh, that wastewater treatment facility is essentially located. If you're familiar with Fortyth Avenue Northwest, it terminates currently in a cul-de-sac located here. Uh, the city has purchased this ten acre triangular parcel from Mathie Construction, uh, and this will house the wastewater treatment facility. As indicated previously, Orinoco Estates, which is illustrated down here at the intersection of Eighty Fifth Street and fifty-two, would also be served by this wastewater treatment facility, uh, through a pump station that would pump wastewater up to the wastewater treatment facility at this location. Uh, wastewater treatment facility site plan, this gives an illustration of some of the complexities of the wastewater treatment plant, it's a pretty decent sized site and lots going on there. I won't get into the detail tonight unless anybody has questions. The existing water main system. Uh, the water main system really consists of two wells, one in River Park and one in Riverwood Hills, and a ground storage reservoir located on the top of the hill across from the cemetery. And then interconnecting that are trunk sewers, so, or trunk water mains, I'm sorry, trunk water mains that convey water from the wells to the water reservoir and then connecting to the trunk water mains, our lateral water mains that convey that water to individual subdivisions and, and, and to your home. Again, lateral water distribution improvements essentially consist of individual small diameter pipes coming to individual houses, including water mains adjacent to homes that are of six to eight inch diameter and also include fire hydrants and valves and fittings and the like. Uh, trunk water mains again, interconnect the existing municipal wells, the waters reservoir and large population centers via larger diameter pipe. Proposed water main improvements are illustrated on this figure, you can see that we do have quite a bit of water main improvement with the project, and essentially we are providing water service to all of the residents who will be served by the sanitary sewer improvements associated with the phase one A improvements, but currently don't have sanitary or don't have water service. So illustrating this figure illustrates essentially the areas to be served by the proposed improvements, and so areas that are just this tannish hatch color, they would be receiving just sanitary sewer service because they currently have water service. The areas that are just this blue crosshatch, they would be receiving only water. Um, and then there are some areas like over in this area that are that have a blue crosshatch and are underlying with this brown hatch, and so these areas would be getting both sewer and water. And, uh, the black outlined areas are essentially the limits of the proposed construction improvements for the phase one A improvements, and they would ultimately be constructed, or these improvements would ultimately be constructed between the fall of twenty twenty-one, essentially very soon, and the end of twenty twenty-three. Who's included in the project? Well, these figures, this figure as well as the next, I think, nine, eight figures illustrate the various areas of, of town that will be receiving water service. And in fact, there are nine sewer and water districts that we've identified in the feasibility report that was completed last spring and is online and available on the city's website. These maps are all color coded by land use. And so, for example, this green color is a city park. Uh, some of these yellow colors, they're all, um, single family residential. In addition to that, this map illustrates which parcels will receive sewer and water service via color coded dot. And so red dots, for example, are single family residential, uh, green dots are non residential or non-single family residential, and then the blue dots are undeveloped parcels. Uh, in addition to that, we illustrate parcels that will be receiving water service. Parcels that have a blue star on them will also be receiving water services. And then you can see by some of the underlying figures, you can see the various types of pipes that interconnect and serve these, these different areas. And so this is the downtown area, District B. Um, this is District C, which is west of Trunk High fifty-two. This is District F, which is south of the downtown area or south of the river and east of Trunk High fifty-two. Uh, this is sewer district G, uh, is the River Park subdivision. District J is the Cedar Woodlands subdivisions number one and two. Uh, this is District K, it is Riverwood Hills subdivisions one through four, as well as a couple properties on the north side of Twelve Street. All of these, again, are being served by the project with sewer and or water. Uh, this is sewer district Z, it consists of the Stope, Stopes Cove area and portions of Wood, Woodview. And again, some of these parcels would be receiving sewer and water like these two. Uh, and some of these along Treetop and Forest would only be receiving, uh, water service. Uh, this is sewer district L, it is essentially the Orinoco Crossing subdivision. Uh, and the last one is District A, District A is the area along Fifth Avenue North West. In this, this district, we are extending water main through this or along the south side of Fifth Avenue on our way to the west side of fifty-two to service some of those residential areas, and since we're extending trunk water main through there, everybody adjacent to the trunk water main gets served with water service, and so these parcels are served with water only. This map shows kind of the big picture phasing for the overall project, the wastewater treatment facility, as well as the trunk sewer improvements are designed for twenty years of existing development plus, plus growth. And so basically, this map illustrates the phase one A improvements, that's the crosshair, cross, the red crosshatch with the gray background. Again, this would be constructed over the next couple of years. Uh, the phase one B project would be constructed in about twenty thirty, and that is just these, just these tan areas, so this areas over in the, if you can see my cursor is the largest area, and again, these areas would be served in approximately twenty thirty in conjunction with phase one B. And then phase one C essentially are the blue areas, this is the development that we foresee occurring over the next twenty years. And so again, all this, all these phases, one A, B, and C, uh, would be served by the, the proposed wastewater treatment facility and the associated trunk sewer that are being proposed as in conjunction with the phase one A improvements. Uh, phase two improvements essentially is development area beyond twenty forty-three and would have to be served by a future expansion of the wastewater treatment facility, as well as additional lift stations and obviously piping. We'd mentioned that since we met last at the, at the spring public open house, we've accomplished a lot of things. One of the things we did do is complete the design of the project and solicit bids, and we have completed that process, we broke the project up into three different contracts, and we have a low bidder for each of those contracts. For contract one, the wastewater treatment facility stopped construction, uh, was our low bidder. Contracts two and three, which are essentially the sanitary sewer and water main improvements broken up via the north and south side of the city. The low bidder for each of those contracts was the same, and it was indeed Fitzgerald excavating and trucking. So at this point in time, we have open bids and we have an apparent low bidder for each of the three contracts, and those contracts are awaiting award by the city council. Um, we mentioned that it's important that we talk about project costs. Lot of information on this exhibit, and I won't go through all of it, but essentially this table breaks down the cost for the project based on element, and first I should talk or define what project cost is. Project cost is essentially construction cost, so you can see construction cost for contract one, two, and three here. Uh, it includes a contingency factor for construction, we've included in the project a two and a half percent contingency, and that includes non-construction costs. Uh, non-construction costs cover things like engineering, surveying, property acquisition, finance costs, legal fees, all, all, everything that is not related directly to construction, but it are, are required to construct the project. So if you look at the project cost by element, you can see that we have the various elements of the project, so we have trunk sewer, lateral sewer, water main, Orinoco Estates trunk sewer, this is a trunk sewer that is necessary for Orinoco Estates to convey their wastewater to the wastewater treatment facility. The wastewater treatment facility itself, and then riverbank stabilization improvements that are required to essentially permit our wastewater discharge. And so if you look at all those project costs, you can see all of the totals construction cost plus non-construction cost plus contingency. And so you can see, you know, for example, the, um, trunk sewer has a eight point four million dollar cost. The wastewater treatment plant has a twenty-six point four million dollar project cost. The total project cost for everything sewer and water improvements for Orinoco and Orinoco Estates totals about forty-six point two million dollars. Uh, Orinoco share, Orinoco Estates share of that based on all a hundred percent of the cost to construct their trunk sewer facility plus a prorated percentage of the wastewater treatment facility and the riverbank stabilization improvement based on their percentage of flow. So Orinoco Estates essentially represents eleven percent of the total flow to be designed as illustrated in this table. Um, and so they pay essentially eleven percent of the wastewater treatment facility costs, the riverbank stabilization costs, and the cost to construct the outflow or outfall pipe from the wastewater treatment facility to, to the river. And so Orinoco's, Orinoco Estates total cost share of the forty-six million dollars is about three point two million dollars. So that leaves Orinoco's cost at just under four point three million dollars. And also should note, I mentioned that we do have quite a bit of street reconstruction as part of the project, and the street reconstruction costs are included in the trunk and lateral sewer cost and equate to just under four or three point seven million dollars in street and drainage reconstruction cost. Project funding and finance, so we work very hard to finance and secure all the grant funding that we possibly can, and in fact, through the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and twenty twenty bonding bills, uh, the city secured just over twenty-seven million dollars. In addition to that, we've secured seven million dollars through a point source implementation grant through the MPCA and PFA. So just about thirty-four million dollars in total, um, grant funding. So we have the project costs minus the grant funding essentially yields the local share, what the city has to finance. And so the local share is essentially financed by a combination of costs for Orinoco Estates Mobile Home Community and the city of Orinoco. And how we finance those costs is through the Public Facilities Authority through a state revolving loan fund for sewer and a separate loan for water. And those loans are advantageous because they cover a twenty or thirty year term and they're at very low interest rates, so typically one to two percent interest. So if we take those same project costs that we talked about a couple slides ago, and then we take these, this thirty-four million dollars in grant dollars, and we essentially divide the grant dollars equitably based on percent of construction cost. And we take the project cost minus the grant dollars, we get the local share for each of the project elements. And so the local share of the project cost, forty-six million minus thirty-four million is about twelve point two million dollars in local share. And so of that local share, about one point or eight point eight four one million is Orinoco Estates cost about point eight five seven million dollars is water and the rest is sanitary sewer, and again, that totals the, the twelve point one six seven million dollars, which essentially represents about twenty-six point three percent of the total project cost that the city would be responsible for ultimately. Why did the project cost change from what we estimated at the March public hearing? The March twenty twenty-one public hearing, well, we did see a cost increase in the project cost. Um, project cost increased by about four million dollars from what was estimated in the fall of twenty twenty, and then subsequently presented at the March twenty twenty-one public hearing in which we used to base our assessment cost on. The increased project costs were largely a result of higher than estimated actual bid construction cost. The actual bid construction cost exceeded the engineer's estimate by about twelve point six percent. Uh, bid construction cost increase increases, uh, on similar other municipal projects were common throughout the re- region. In fact, I think the average for these projects, uh, that were bid, uh, recently was a just under sixteen percent over the engineer's estimate for these various different communities. So we fared just a little bit better than that, but obviously not where we wanted to be. And I think the, the rationale is, is probably plain for everybody to kind of notice or understand in everyday life, we are kind of dealing with it, the COVID nineteen pandemic has impacted everything. Uh, you've seen it on the news, you probably experienced it yourself. If you're. Uh, you've seen it on the news, you probably experienced it yourself. If you're buying certain materials, uh, equipment, uh, labor costs. Um, labor shortages, these are all issues and they're essentially driving project costs up. In addition to that. Uh, contractors are having uh trouble procuring certain certain materials which. Result in using other other sometimes more expensive materials or just not being able to getting them. Get these materials and it impacts project schedules and another end result is is that it drives project costs up. And so if we take a look at our local share cost, it was previously estimated at about eight point one. Uh, five nine million dollars and it's now just about twelve point two million dollars. Um, and this is, you know, basically a function of our increased construction costs of four million dollars. Uh, and our grant funding being stable, it hasn't changed. So. Um, one of the two sides of the equation needs to change and as you know, essentially it's the local share that ultimately increased and that impacts. Uh, the cost to be assessed by to to benefiting property owners. So before we get into benefiting property owners, I want to take a little bit of time and talk about equivalent residential units. We talked about this in depth before. I won't go into it in detail, but. I want to remind everybody what a equivalent residential unit is. It's essentially a single family home in Ornoco. Um. A single family home is one equivalent residential unit. Um, for multifamily houses, for example, an apartment. Uh, or a mobile home or a twin home, they would be considered. Zero point eight equivalent residential units per unit. So for example, if, you know, a three apartment building. Would equate to three units times point eight equals two point four equivalent residential units. Non-residential units um. Non-residential equivalent residential units are based upon water water usage. Uh, we kind of talked about that before. Um, but there's a fairly straightforward formula for that too. Um, same with special cases, there are a number of special cases I won't go into depth as we've discussed that um in the past. So now that we've talked about equivalent residential units, we kind of know how the project's being phased, we can take a look at this component of the project. Uh, wastewater fees to be assessed to benefiting properties are based upon equivalent residential units calculated for a given parcel. So we know in phase one A, there are four hundred and. Ninety four parcels which result in five hundred and ten equivalent residential units. In phase one B, again, that's the phase that would be constructed in twenty thirty, there are two hundred and twenty six equivalent residential units. In phase one C, this is future development, there's a hun- uh thousand seventy equivalent residential units. So. Total equivalent residential units that will be developed and served by the project over the next. Uh, twenty years is estimated at one thousand eight hundred and six equivalent residential units. It should be noted that of the hundred and ninety equivalent residential units um that will be generated at Ornoco Estates is not included in that tally. Because they are, their cost share is calculated separately. So estimated wastewater fees, wastewater system fees. Uh, so the wastewater system fees are divided. Into three fees that comprise the entire fee that is um. Assessed for each individual equivalent residential unit. So the first fee is the wastewater treatment plant. And the total. This total local share of the wastewater treatment plan is about six point two million dollars. There are one thousand eight hundred and six equivalent residential units that'll benefit from that treatment facility over the next twenty years. So. Six point two million divided by eighteen oh six yields. A fee per equivalent residential unit of three thousand four hundred and thirty nine dollars. Similarly, for the trunk sewer, all equivalent residential units that will be served by the phase one A improvements will will benefit from. Um, this as all the wastewater has to flow through the trunk sewer to get to the wastewater treatment plant. And so. Trunk sewer, local share of the trunk sewer project cost is about two point two million dollars. This divided by the total number of equivalent residential units yields a cost of one thousand two hundred and twenty one dollars per equivalent residential unit. The lateral sewer connection charge has a total project cost of about two million dollars. We divide this two million dollars by the total number of um parcels being served. Um, as each parcel only pays one equivalent residential unit for lateral sewer connection. And so the total cost. Per ERU for each lateral sewer connection is. Four thousand one hundred and fifty seven dollars. So if you add these three fees up, you. It equates to eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars per one ERU. And so I'd point this out, if you break this down on a monthly basis, which we previously estimated. Um, PFA was previously telling us this project would be financed over a twenty year term at about a two percent interest rate. So if you break. This cost down on a monthly basis. And amortize it over twenty years at two percent interest, it yields about forty four dollars and ninety three cents per month. Now I would highlight the next item here specifically. PFA last week. Completed their analysis of our project based on as bid construction cost and they have now determined that our project does qualify for a thirty year loan. Um, the table above is for a twenty year loan. And so based on this information, the monthly wastewater cost for one ER ERU over a thirty year term at a two point two five percent interest rate. Is thirty three dollars and ninety five cents. Uh, this is about three and a half dollars higher than we estimated um per month, higher than we estimated in. In uh, at the March meeting. So obviously it's amortized over thirty years and not twenty years, but. We were happy to see the monthly uh cost um be pulled down and and PFA step up and provide the city and its residents with thirty year loan, which I think is advantageous. Um. Should also note that the proposed. Uh, fees to be assessed to bene- benefiting property owners are estimates based on actual bid construction costs and included two and a half percent contingency factor. Uh, that two and a half percent contingency factor doesn't sound like a whole whole lot, but it's nearly a million dollars. Um, the final assessments will be recalculated once we um have actual. Construction costs are close to actual construction costs, but we think that this number. Likely won't over a whole lot. Estimated water distribution system fee fees. This calculation is a little bit more straightforward. Um, we have. Lateral water main connection charges total local share for those lateral water main cost is about. Point eight six million. We uh, we count a hundred and twenty four point six equivalent residential units will be served by these lateral improvements. So you take eight hundred and sixty thousand divided by a hundred and twenty four and that equates to about six thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars. Per equivalent residential unit for water service. Um, it's important to note two things, one trunk sewer or trunk water main. Um, is not being assessed, the city through the utility is paying for the. The trunk sewer improvement. I'm sorry, the trunk water main improvement. And the other thing to note is that. Because of the project cost being only point eight six million, I say only, but that that obviously is a lot of money, but from PFA's perspective. Um, it's a small project, it only qualifies for a twenty year term, but if you take that twenty year term um and amortize that over. Um, amortize the principal cost over. That period at a two percent interest rate, it equates to about thirty five dollars and four cents on a monthly basis. Now. None of these costs are going to be assessed on a monthly basis, but I think it's important. I think people often think of things on a monthly basis. You look at your. TV bill, your cell phone bill, all of those are on a monthly basis. So we put it in this term. Um, just for people's con- convenience and comparison sake. Um, the costs are assessed to benefiting property owners and they appear on your property taxes and so essentially pay them twice a year. Um, in conjunction with your property tax. Uh, a reasonable estimate of the total amount of the proposed phase one A water water system and associated. Water main improvement project cost to be assessed to benefiting phase one A property owners within the city. Of Ornoco is five point three five million dollars and point eight six million for Ornoco Estates. A morning to a total of six point two one million dollars. This represents approximately thirteen point four percent of the forty six million dollars. So phase one A property owners will be paying about. Um, thirteen point four percent of the total project cost. The future phase one B and one C property owners would be charged six million dollars of that cost. Through future plant investment fee and sewer availability charges. Uh, and th- these costs will be used to fund the remaining project cost loan debt service. This amounts to approximately thirteen percent of the project cost of the improvements. Phase one B fees will be charged in the future in conjunction with uh future lateral sewer improvements. Phase one C will be charged in conjunction with future development. Um, whoop. So in total, if you take phase one A, B and C, uh, there's a total. Cost of twelve point two million and that will be funded through fee revenue. Um, to to essentially pay for the local share. Um, and those costs would be funded through a combination of loans that. For the water system, it would be a twenty year loan for the sewer system, it would be a thirty year loan. And that twelve point two million dollar local share represents about twenty six percent of the forty six point two million dollar project costs for the improvements. Uh, public engagement, um, we have. Tried hard to provide lots of information to the public through meetings, through information posted on the websites. Um, through mailings and and other other methods and will continue to do that. Um, the current and past presentation, uh, tonight's presentation is is or will be available on. Uh, the city's website, if you look at the. City's website and go to the community heading under wastewater project. Um, this information along with all past reports and frequently asked questions, documents and and related documents is available for people to find and get good information. Um, moving forward, uh, we plan additional future mailings, whether it be to talk about project schedules. Um, this next spring or public open house events um with the contractor to talk about. Um, their plans for construction sequencing and phasing and how that'll impact individual ro- property owners. So lots of lots of that planned for the future as well. Uh, project next steps, project schedule, the first four of these items, we're already through. Uh, right now, uh, we've opened bids and we're finalizing project loans and. Financing and the next step really will be to execute some agreements with Ornoco Estates and then award the project likely at the November. Twenty twenty one meeting. Um, after that's done, we'd execute contracts and we'd expect construction to possibly begin or likely. To begin uh in late November of twenty twenty one. Substantial completion of the proposed improvements is a few years away. Uh, we're looking at substantial completion where the system. Wastewater system is operational in October of twenty twenty three. Um, we are planning an assessment hearing, so that's essentially the final step in the assessment process. Uh, which you'd be mailed um all of the cost to be information on the cost to be assessed and. Uh, methods to appeal that and so on and so forth. And of course, there'd be another he- hearing similar to this. Uh, that is tentatively planned for either October twenty twenty two or October twenty twenty three. The first payment of assessment would be due in the county. Uh, through the county property taxes and that would essentially occur occur six months after the assessment hearing. So with that said, um, went through a lot of information. Uh, who has a first question?
So right now, Joe, we don't have anybody from on the chat site.
Okay.
Uh, please uh. With your question and uh same time here at the. At city hall, if anybody has a question, uh, we can do a couple of things. We we have a wireless microphone, we can bring the microphone out to you. Uh, or you can come to the podium, whichever you're most comfortable with. Uh, we can do it either way. Yeah. You come up there, that's fine. Yeah.
On this is, on the assessment. In a person just.
Just take your name and quick address.
Dan Johnson, twenty five minutes left. On the assessment of eight thousand, the person. Just pay the, just pay your eight thousand dollars, one check.
Um.
And then actually get a, because you're not gonna go over. A long period of time or anything else, interest wise, whatever, would it be less money if you just wrote the check for the assessment? Number two is because you have your. How they're gonna tear up the whole street and tear everything up in town. Um. What's that gonna save for goal rush and in the town be able to have that if that if the town whole main street is tore up, everything's tore up. They'll do that and how are they gonna put it back together so that. And my last, I guess, but my last right now is. The cost of this. And what's going on in our country right now. What I see is I see ships sitting out on the, not getting supplies, getting things in, we've already mentioned about supplies. But what's the likelihood of? You start digging the streets up and we start doing things and all of a sudden you can't get something and there everything sits. You know, in a, in a mess that there's no guarantees in life, but. I have really concerns of that right now and what's going on because. You've already said the cost has gone up, but there's no um. You talk about your sewer injectors, the electricians can't get power boxes, they can't get a lot of things that would have to go with this project when you're. You're building your. Plant out there that really doesn't affect the residents because that's on its own property, kind of moving construction forward on that. But right now, a lot of electrician, a lot of things, they can't get the equipment. Electrical and everything else to build it, which then could put that project, even at the sewer plant also that you're building. In waylays, which then people come back and I didn't hear, and I don't know, Joe, if that's three percent or two percent. What are we all gonna be on the hook for if all of a sudden comes in and says, guess what, folks? We've already been told it was six thousand and now it's nine. And we can't get parts, we can't do anything else. And it gets to the point where it puts it right over the top for us. To think about some of that stuff because the costs are going up. Quite a thing. So I I guess as I, as I sit back and look at what's going on, I'm a little concerned about this project. But if I, I want to know if I can pay for my sum upfront. If I get, if there's less money to pay for it, I'm in, I'm done. So you don't come back and say to me, we want to reassess you now because. We've come up with a new thing here. There's a, I guess, as I look at the map up here. There's some properties in town, I guess, next to me or different things aren't on the sewer map. And then they're not being charged because it's an empty lot, so they, the sewer is there. At what point, if these people come online. In in Ornoco and they want to do something with the lot. Do any of us get money back? Because they now become part of the system and they start paying their. Their nine thousand dollars and if it's two years down the road, is it really nine thousand or is it a little bit more because the rest of us? It appears to me that the number you talked about. Is all of us on that hook right now for that total sum of money. Where do the empty lots come in or the people who want to hook up? Where does that cost come in to lower our cost? I just some questions.
All right, so lots of questions there. Um, first question I think you asked is can you prepay an assessment? Well. Um, there, since we've had a public hearing and this is now a sec- technically a second public hearing. There is a pending assessment, there is no assessment at this point. Um, so you can't prepay an assessment until we have the assessment hearing and go through that process. That's. Uh, at least at at the soonest, a year away and possibly two years away. Um, but when the time comes, can you prepay an assessment? Absolutely you can. Uh, and if you choose to prepay an assessment, you avoid any interest cost. Um, that said, the interest, you know, estimated for the wastewater projects about two and a quarter percent. That said, the interest, you know, estimated for the wastewater projects about two and a quarter percent. So, you know, and it's and it's over thirty year term. So you you gotta kind of gauge whether that's in your best interest or not. But you know, you have the ability or will have the ability to prepay the assessment with no interest charge. You asked a question about the construction and will it affect Gold Rush? We have included some accommodation within the contract for Gold Rush. Obviously, it's a big project. It's being constructed over two years at some point within the downtown area, there will have to be considerable considerable disturbance. The contract set up that we will work together and try to minimize that disturbance to the greatest greatest extent possible. Or reasonable. But there will undoubtedly be some impact, but we're hoping to minimize that. Where we can and to the extent that we can. You also mentioned. About the factor, the uncertainty with the pandemic and the difficulty getting materials and. What about the cost changing? So at this point, we have a unit price contract. Those prices are fixed within the contract. So there shouldn't be a lot of risk or really risk of, you know, the unit prices changing because. You know, the price of pipe or the price of fire hydrant increases. Right now, there continues to be upward pressure. Contractors anxious to lock in these prices that they have essentially committed to when they signed the bid. And so we are wanting to get the project awarded as soon as possible so they can go ahead and complete those transactions and and lock that in. And. Will be able to move forward. In terms of availability, you know, we're we're seeing most of the issue with some of the bigger pipe, for example, sixteen inch water main. Is is an item right now that we we we. Are having difficulty getting. But most of the smaller pipe that we are using is is fairly readily readily available. It is more expensive than it used to be. In some, you know, periods, it, you know, might take months to get it, but you know, one of the nice parts about when we bid this project is. You know, we we really won't be putting much pipe in the ground for, you know. Till next spring. So we do have a decent window for which contractors can order and 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 secure pipe and. The construction window is fairly lengthy and so. With construction proceeding through twenty twenty three, so I'm envisioning that some of these issues will will calm down and and. You know, material supplies might might improve and, you know, who knows what's gonna happen with cost frankly. You mentioned about future connections and properties that are within developed areas that are or are not. Being. Assessed at this point. And so properties that. We identified some properties that are deemed developable, developable properties and they are receiving. Sewer and or water service and will be assessed accordingly. Other properties that are. Large and could be subdivided. Property owners had the option to opt into the project and request additional sewer and water services. If they declined to opt into the project and request additional sewer and water services, then. The costs associated with. The construction of those future sewer and water services to that would be borne by the property owner and then they would also be assessed. Or not assessed, they would be charged the full fee suite that everybody else was assessed. The downfall for them is that they wouldn't be able to have it financed over a thirty year term. And then you also asked, would that affect your assessment? Well, we are expecting that. Eight hundred or. In total, one thousand eight hundred and six equivalent residential units will develop over the next twenty years and. Whether that's single family houses, houses on a brand new development on the outskirts of Orinoco or if it's a. You know, a twin home in downtown Orinoco, it really doesn't matter. They will be charged those fees at that point in time and it doesn't doesn't affect the assessment for anybody else. So those assessments would remain unchanged. Essentially, we're assessing you the fees associated with the proposed improvements. Who has the next question?
Question online real quick. This is Amy Luke's at one forty third street southeast. Her question is any, any estimate of the cost to get the sewer into the house?
You said third street southeast?
Yes.
Okay, so third street southeast, I'm assuming is in an area that is getting a gravity sewer. Gravity sewer. We essentially extend extend the property or we extend the individual pipe from the main. To the property line, the property owner's responsibility is to go ahead and extend it from. Essentially the property line into the house and for gravity sewers, the property owner would also have to abandon the septic tank. And so it really is a case by case basis. It depends upon how complicated it is to extend the sewer. From that property line to the house. If it's a, if it's a straight shot and there's not a lot of, you know, topographic constraints and the distance is relatively short. It it can be fairly inexpensive. It could be, you know, a few thousand dollars to do that and maybe a thousand dollars to pump and and abandon the tank. Or a little bit more. And if it's more complex, for example, if you've got to cut through a driveway or go all the way around the. The house to the back of the house where the septic comes out, you know, that cost could be three, four thousand dollars. It really. Depends on the individual situation. One thing that we would offer during construction is we will stake the location of your individual sewer and or water service. And then we will send a notification to the property owner saying, you know, we've staked where we think it might make. The most sense to install your sewer and water service, but we'd be happy to meet with you and look at. Alternatives or look at, you know. Where your septic is coming out of your house or where the water is going into it and and. Or we we certainly have some flexibility in shifting those locations along the property lines to to best serve the property owners. And so we will. Reserve that or plan to meet with property owners that have concerns about those items moving forward and. Of course, willing to work with property owners to help reduce their cost where where we can and where it makes sense for everybody involved.
You have a question from here at City Hall? Yes, if not, okay.
Steve Norland, eight forty five first street northwest. First question I have to ask is the legality on getting these blanket easements. For those homes that need the grinder station. As far as I've researched and the attorneys have I spoken to is everyone has said blanket easements. Are no longer acceptable in the state of Minnesota and there is a statute on the books saying so. Okay, you guys say the PFA, I believe, says that in order to get the funding that you have to own. That grinder to maintain and I understand that. And totally, first of all, I'm not against this project. I am against the illeg- that this is illegal, what you guys are doing. Of. Taking mine and numerous others in my neighborhood. Having taken their rights away to their own properties. Okay? I have spoken, I just got off the phone for an hour and a half, well, actually an hour and forty eight minutes with our right away agent. Who says she is a licensed surveyor, which she is hasn't surveyed a property in years. She has told me. Which. I think you got the card ahead of the horse. Get these properties surveyed where they're going to go. Where you guys have proposed the line is going. Okay, in my case, I have a driveway that's twenty foot wide. Okay, you need to put an inch and a quarter line. Proposed down that driveway. Down through the center, you got ten foot on each side. You can have that. I've made that clear to numerous people, but. I was told tonight that I have to pay to have it surveyed. Okay, no. No, I'm not in agreement with that. And I'm sure there are other property owners, the ones that. Don't have in their property descriptions of where that easement is because there are individuals in my neighborhood. That do, and I was told there are eighty seven properties that need this grinder. Okay? I'm a little disturbed about this and I understand and I want some answered questions. Okay, you get a surveyor out to my home. And go down the center of that driveway, you got your twenty feet. Okay, I am willing to give up that much of my rights to my property. No. But good luck putting it in. You know, I live in. Probably the most beautiful area in town. The hill on the west side of the highway. Okay, beautiful maples. Sumac maples. Okay? You've put that line anywhere else through that woods. There's compensation made for every little seedling. Every little tree. Eighty foot maples. Yeah. And I've made numerous attempts to to deal with the city and I know I have spoken with the mayor. I have spoken with Joel. I have spoken with your right away agent. Mr. McKenzie was out here to my property. We discussed it. And it still sounds like they wanna come down the driveway. Which I'm okay with, but now tonight I was told I have to pay for the survey. And what do I get compensated? For giving up twenty feet by two hundred and eighty eight plus whatever comes into the home from the grinder station? You know what I get compensated? One dollar. One dollar for giving up the rights for you so you people can come in and maintain that. And I can't build a damn thing on it. Nobody's giving me a viable reason why you need the whole four and a half acres. By having it as a blanket easement. Can you give me an answer, Mr. Mayor?
I can answer that, Mayor.
Go ahead, Joe.
I've been writing down some of the comments and of course. We have had the opportunity to talk to folks and have actually put out a frequently asked questions document on this. The reason for the blanket easement and the legality of it, we've had numerous discussions with state of Minnesota on this. There are many, many easements, you know, this isn't the first sewer and sewer project that was done in the state of Minnesota. And it certainly wasn't the first one using grinder stations. And this is predominantly the most common way of doing it. And it is also the least costly. We are talking about costs, you know, if we were to survey all of these. Locations for the. Proposed low pressure sewer services to serve the, I believe it's eighty four parcels getting. These facilities, you know, would add thousands of dollars per unit. Of cost. And at this point, based on the ASBID construction costs. For property owners that sign the agreement, we would be spending just on the construction side of things about eighteen and nineteen thousand dollars. Per parcel to construct these facilities. Within private property. And so, you know, you make the comment of, you know, what do you get for the easement? Well, you essentially. Benefit from the standpoint of the state of Minnesota and the city investing about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars in your lot. To construct that facility and then operate it and maintain it for you. And I would also mention that the blanket easement, yeah, it's a blanket easement. Or an easement that covers the entire property, but it only really covers where we construct the sewer facilities. And so it provides access to construct, operate, maintain those sewer facilities if there's not sewer facilities. And certain areas of the project or parcels that. Are untouched or there's no reason to touch, then the city has no reason or right to be on that. All that. Agreement does is give the city the right to come in and build that facility for you. Which does provide a significant investor benefit and there is a very significant. Investment to do that. If you choose not to grant the easement, that's fine. People have the right not to grant the easement. You can simply construct those facilities on your own. We have given that right and if people want to. Go outside of what we're offering and they want, you know, want to survey that alignment, that that's perfectly acceptable too. You can do that, but that's not a cost that the state of Minnesota is willing to fund or the city.
Okay, so you are telling me, Joe, okay, what do we go by when we speed down the highway? Yes, we take a risk. When we speed, correct? When we go over the posted light or the posted speed limit, we take a risk. Okay, this council. Stand tech, you, Joe, you, your right away agent and every employee that works with stand tech is taking a risk. There is a statute on the books in the state of Minnesota. I don't have the number with me right at this time, but the attorneys know it. My attorneys know it. That state blanket easements haven't are no longer allowed in the state since twenty fourteen. I believe is the date of a year. And that you have to have a well-defined easement, which requires. Having survey done. Not just, well, take the whole property. Okay? And I know it's been discussed amongst this council numerous times. Again, you're leaving it up to the homeowner when it comes time that that homeowner no wonder, no longer wishes to live at his. Home and he goes to sell. I've mentioned to the consulate numerous or added city council meeting and to the mayor. You're leaving it up to the proc, to the owner. To make that definition. At his cost in order to sell his home. You got a two point six percent contingency on that's this project, is that right, Joe?
Uh, it is two point five percent.
Two point five percent on, uh, what's the total cost of the project, Joe? With that.
The total project cost is forty six million, the total construction cost with the contingency.
Why don't we take that contingency? And survey those eighty four properties. Where it is going to go.
That's certainly something the council could choose to do, but based on the analysis that we've had done and the city's attorney's opinion, it's it's. It's not worth the investment. It's not necessary. It's been done elsewhere without problem throughout the state for years.
Maybe those people are ignorant, I don't know.
Well.
You know, that's what people's being. You know, they're taking a chance and this council's taking a chance. And finally, you have a neighborhood. That wants to stand up and say blanket easements are wrong. You know, if it takes. Putting a injunction on this project until these easements are given. Maybe we will have to do that as a neighborhood. And I know public information out of these eighty four properties, how many of these agreements do you have?
About eighty percent, eighty two percent, something like that.
Yeah, eighty one, eighty two.
Something like that, yeah.
Percent. So you're still leaving. Twenty people or not twenty, but. Twelve, thirteen people out there, not. With the agreements. Around there.
And you are not, you're, you do not, you know, we've talked about this many times, but you you don't have to sign the agreement. And you are not, you're, you do not, you know, we've talked about this many times, but you, you don't have to sign the agreement. It's, we'll simply stop the work at the property line and alleviate you of any of the
Estimated.
hardships that would come, come with this based on your comment.
Now, is there my driveway where you proposed it on your maps? It's a done good deal.
So my understanding that when McKenzie was out there and you can speak to McKenzie, your discussion about where you would propose putting the line, I don't know if it was down the driveway or beside the driveway, but.
Beside the driveway, you're gonna have to take out about fifty trees. Old, mature, eighty-foot-tall trees.
Which isn't proposed, right? I mean, it's drawn along your driveway. We certainly can put it alongside your driveway. Nobody's posing to take out any trees. I'm not sure why we're talking about it.
I wouldn't, I mean, we're only talking about a very shallow excavation. If we are hitting rock, the excavation can be at five-and-a-half feet deep, so.
How wide, how deep?
Five-and-a-half feet deep.
I'll tell you right now. I'm on, my driveway is bedrocked. I have no gravel on it. It is bedrocked. It has been for the forty, forty years I've almost lived there and I'm okay?
Yeah, so then it doesn't need to be very wide, is what I'm saying, that to excavate a five-foot-deep trench.
Doesn't have to be wide, no, I'm okay with that.
Well, I'm just saying that we don't need to take a lot of trees out if our excavation isn't.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna take it, there's no need to take any trees out.
Yes.
All you gotta do is get it surveyed. Get it surveyed and you got your easement. I'm telling you, and I'm telling every citizen here. Survey that down, take some of your contingency money. That's, that's what it's for, isn't it? Contingency overrun on cost? What? This is an overrun. Would you say? And McKenzie, would you explain why? You looked at my neighbor's agreement, correct?
Uh huh, I did.
And what did this man say? And what did you see in his agreement?
I don't remember exactly.
A defined area on his property where that was going. He did not have a blanket easement. How many more? Neighborhood.
Absolutely not true.
Fine, incorrect. If I could have went down and got that man here tonight, I would have asked him to bring his agreement.
We appreciate your comments, that's why we have.
You guys are corrupt. Thank you.
We have an online comment here. This is from a C D Mars at seven-five-five Cedar Point Lane Southeast. The question is to avoid exceeding project cost estimates. I'm assuming this is for the, from the property line to the home. Are there any penalties for the subs, i.e. not completing job tasks on time, et cetera? Are these hard bids?
Yes, there are, there's a extensive project manual, essentially a contract that essentially dictates the terms and conditions in which the work is supposed to be done. Are there liquidated damages and concrete written schedules for construction milestones, substantial complete, completion dates, final completion dates? In the contract, absolutely there are. They're in the agreement form, you're free to see them if you wish. And then there are liquidated damages associated with not beating those milestone completion dates and substantial and final completion dates. That is also within the contract. And those liquidated damage values are significant and there is a significant disincentive for the contractor not to meet those milestone requirements. And one of the complications with the project is, you know, we, we've looked at that extensively. There are three contracts, the contracts are interdependent. And so that's why we had to think through that sequencing and scheduling component of the project and put significant repercussions to the contractors, should they not meet those, those specified milestone and substantial final completion date. So yes.
Another online comment from Brett Jarvis at nine-forty Cedar Point Lane Southeast. If I am unable to, if I'm able to unmute and ask my question, might be easier to ask, so.
He's unmuted.
Brett, you're unmuted right now, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, guys. So my question is, I, as it stated, I live at nine-forty Cedar Point Lane Southeast, my wife and I. So we are part of Cedar Woodlands One, and I guess my question is my, our property abuts the easement that I believe there's going to be an access road built on. I did not see that in this presentation information and I haven't seen that posted on the City of Ornoke website. However, my HOA did provide a different, different files that kind of showed that information on there. And I guess my question is, is kind of the, the same of like, what is the plan for that? So yeah, so if you look at that, I'm just to the left of that white property there that, so yeah, that, that easement, yep, you're right, right there. And, and I guess what's hard to do unless you're actually looking at our property is that there's a ravine basically halfway through our, you know, basically this, the, the back half of the property that goes into that outlot is how are they actually going to build a access road? Because this was surveyed to be the access road for the sewer originally, but the original developer did not even, I mean, they must have looked at it and said, this is cost prohibitive for him to be able to actually do it that way. And you'll see that purple or whatever color line that goes all the way up to Cedar Point Road up there is, is how he built the access to the, to that outlot.
Right, so you're absolutely right, there's a twenty-foot finger of the outlot that extends to Cedar Point Lane. And so that twenty-foot outlot is proposed to house a twelve-foot drive access that will cross over the ravine behind your house and then turn the corner and be used to access the lift station. Okay, lift station four. And so how we would do that is, you know, largely along your house and along your line, your lot line, nothing will change much in terms of grade, the, the existing roadway or the driveway surface would essentially blend into the surrounding soils. But once we hit that ravine, we would end up placing a sixty-inch diameter culvert at the bottom of that embankment and, or at the bottom of the ravine and then filling in embankment. Some from the lift station excavation and some from street reconstructions elsewhere on the project and we would essentially build a slope that would or build an embankment that would, that would facilitate the construction of the driveway through that, that ravine area.
Okay, so, and I guess then the follow-up on that is that obviously with that deep of an embankment, this is going to have to be a pretty significant I, I guess, you know, fill that it's, it's going to spill into that property. And I get, and that's same concern as the, the other gentleman, you know, when we have mature trees in our yard. This is going to lead to the destruction of, of trees on our property, I'm, I'm assuming, because of the, the fact that it's, there's, I don't see how you could build that on a twenty-foot easement without impacting the, the surrounding area.
Absolutely, as we, as we go through that ravine, we will be, we'll have to take out some trees to facilitate the construction of that embankment. All of that areas within existing drainage and utility easements that, that give us the right to, to construct, construct those facilities essentially to access the lift station. Did you say you are, have, have you been, we've met with the HOA out there a number of times and provided construction plans and that type of thing? To kind of talk about that. So if you want to look at it with me in person, we can, I'd be happy to meet you or McKenzie and kind of walk through that stuff. Sometimes it's a little easier to see when you're out there and, and have the paperwork with you, but happy to meet with you if necessary.
Yeah, no, I would appreciate that.
Okay, why don't you, my contact information is on the bottom of that six-page handout. I think my phone number and email are there. If you would just ideally send me an email with your phone number and contact information, we'll set something up and, and take a walk through it.
True thing, thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Anything else?
That was it for me, thank you.
Perfect.
Anybody else here? Jen?
Dan Thompson, twenty-five minutes, is this gentleman just spoke, I just would like to ask Joel, the question is talk about, so I understand a blanket easement is a blanket easement, that you can do what you want. In my opinion, that you would have your land surveyed and you would let the city know exactly in your deed, in your abstract, exactly where the right-of-way is. So when you go to sell your place and you do your place, that you know exactly, the home buyer that's buying it knows exactly what everything is. A blanket is, to me, if I'm understanding this correctly, they could, your whole property becomes a blanket and they, and trust me, I worked for the government twenty-seven and a half years. I don't trust the government as far as I can throw them anymore because of what's going on. You as a council here tonight can say whatever you want, but you cannot hold the next council feet to the fire. You know, there was ever rules, whatever you do, the next council comes in and say, you know what, we're gonna change that. And now we're gonna come down a different way on your property. That is my understanding in my years of dealing with government and things like that. Then that's why I asked earlier to get it in writing and to pay it and be done. So my question, I guess to Joe is, if these people, if it costs him two-thousand dollars to survey his driveway and he pays the two-thousand, it behooves me to that he didn't want to pay the two-thousand out of his own pocket and tell you exactly where you can come down that roadway. And anybody else that would do that, is that a possibility? Joe?
Um, yeah, we've, we've, we, we've indicated if he wants to pay for the survey, then then we could certainly do that, but that's not the policy that the city has. And, you know, you really got to read the agreement to take this into the context of the of the, what's being done, you know, essentially we have a pretty good idea of where, you know, the sewer would extend into the property, but as we meet out there, you know, for example, if we were to do a meets and bounds description of an easement based on what we have, it's likely that you know, seventy-five or eighty percent of them would have to change because, you know, we'd meet with the property owner and say, well, you know, we, we didn't have the exact location of where your buried electric line comes in. And it would make sense if we, we shift this over five feet this way or, you know, it turns out that the septic tank and the drainage field, you know, wasn't accurately mapped by the county permit and it's really over here. And so it would make sense if we would shift the grinder station ten feet that way. You know? By, by not, not defining that and, and, and having things more generally described with this access easement makes a lot more sense. That, that and the fact that, you know, if we have a prescribed twenty-foot corridor to come down, you know, for example, what happens when the truck, truck has to get there to pump the septic tank? Well, it has to follow that corridor or can it drive on the driveway? You know? None of that really makes sense. And so if we were to do that, you know, we, we, we could come in post-construction and survey all these and draw up the documents and, and re-record them all and spend a couple thousand dollars more per parcel. But based on what everybody else does in the industry and what hasn't caused problems for other folks is doing it the way we're doing it. And we're trying to save a few thousand dollars per parcel, doing it this way. But, you know, if, if the city and the city or the property owner wants to step in and, you know, expend the additional funds, then, then that, that can be done. But the reality is, it is a, you know, it is an access easement that does cover the proper, property until the parcel is, or until the improvements are constructed and then it's constrained to, you know, just operating, maintaining those facilities. There aren't, there is no other purpose for the grinder station and the low-pressure sewer system. It is simply to serve that facility, not going to anybody else, it can't go to anybody else, it simply serves that facility. So there would be no reason to relocate it or move it unless it, there's a reason to accommodate a request from the property owner, which the agreement, you know, provides that opportunity, so.
Okay, so the question is, if I heard him correctly, he said according to the statute blanket ones are no longer viable in the state of Minnesota under the statute. So as the city, through all this process.
Maybe attorney has worked through the agreement and prepared the agreement and.
Eighty percent, and someone could challenge it. The point is, is as long as everybody goes along with it, you don't have an issue. But if someone wants to take it to court and make an issue out of it, it can null and void your eighty percent. Again, my question, I, I guess is if if it was me, I would rather tell you that you can come down the middle of my driveway, I'm gonna draw that up, I'm gonna spend the two-thousand dollars to have it surveyed. This is your easement, it's going to my abstract, I know exactly where it's at when I sell my property. Is that a possibility? Can he, can he do that? Yes or no?
Yes, I think we've said that three times, he can do that.
His cost.
His cost.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Maybe also at the city hall of Amy, Luke's at one forty-third Street Southeast.
We have someone that's been raising their hand here.
Another question, Joel, again, this is, has to do with.
What, let's just.
Steve Norland, Ornoke, Minnesota. Just one quick question.
We've got someone that's online.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then we've got another gal in front of you.
She has a great question about she has geothermal pipe buried, love it big deep, how deep will the sewer be dug?
Sewer, sewer be dug? Uh, she, does she have a low-pressure sewer system? What, what was her address again? First street?
On forty-third street. Southeast.
First or third?
Third street. Off of Minnesota Avenue.
Yeah.
Next to the river.
I, some, some of the sewers in that area are gravity, some of them are low-pressure sewer. So I'm not sure exactly which she is. The low-pressure, excuse me, the low-pressure. What was that, Ryland?
I think she's on the, the north side of.
Third street? Southeast.
Amy, if you want to mute yourself, you could ask.
Yeah, go on. So the, the geothermal is down the hill and comes up into the house, but we're on a hill, so I'm assuming we're gravity.
I, where, where are you? Can you see my screen, Amy? Are you here or here or here or?
Sorry, I gotta get rid of the chat because that's over it.
Sure.
Right on the corner of Second Avenue and Third Street.
Exactly.
Right here. Yeah, so you're.
I'm across the street. No, the other way.
Here.
You're on.
I'm sorry, it's too small for me to see.
Are you on the corner of Second Avenue and Third Street? Yes.
Right, absolutely.
It looks like it's a gravity service to, to Second Avenue.
It is, it is. So, you know, with gravity sewer, we might be up to ten feet deep. So your service probably will range from eight to ten feet deep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Patsy?
Patsy Matts, one thirty-five Fourth Street Northwest. My question is, and I haven't been to any of these meetings before, so you might have already, everybody else might already know this, but is there something drawn up that we know where the sewer will pass our property so that I know where my septic tanks are, but I don't know which side or where I would be, like if I planted a tree and I might have already planted a tree right wherever this is supposed to be joined in?
Right, well, that's a good question. And so this is Patsy Matts and she lives on the corner of Right, well, that's a good question. And so this is Patsy Matts and she lives on the corner of Fourth Street Northwest and.
Second.
Second Avenue. Fourth Street Northwest and Second Avenue Northwest on the corner, it's a gravity sewer to the, yeah.
Um, I'm on the corner.
We can look at it specifically.
And when the gravity lines are with the, when you're ready to, state, an engineer will come out and identify where the. Water and, and where the sewer curb surface would be at and then they can. Help you identify where the line would go to the house.
But that might be a year from now?
It could be, yes.
So I can't plant a tree or I've been planting trees and plants on my yard and I won't know where. I have to wait a year or two before I can maybe plant a tree, cause it might be in the way of wherever this is gonna go.
No, we can meet with you before that. If you've got plans to plant something or build something and wanna make sure that it's not gonna. You know, be, be disturbed by the. Um, proposed improvements, you know, you can email me. Uh, or McKenzie and one of us can come out to the site and we can, you know, with. You know, a few feet of accuracy tell you what is at least planned in terms of your, your proposed sewer. And or water service location and, um, you know, what you have planned and if that will be impacted or, or not. So we'd be happy to come out and. Look, look at those types of issues if, if people wanna just, just send us an email or, or make a call and, and we'll set something up.
Yeah, so you know where your septic service is at right now? Okay.
And we have a lot of that mapped, especially in the downtown area, um, mapped fairly accurately, so. Um, we can tie all that kind of together and, and, and show you an illustration of what we, we have.
Anybody else here that has a question? You don't have any more questions online unless anybody else has a question? Okay. Final call for questions. Alright. And from Zoom, I appreciate your time, we appreciate your time for being on and hopefully we've answered your questions. With that, I, um. Call for a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-nine. All's in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Thank you very much, everybody, appreciate it very much.
Bye, folks.